All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the January 21st, 2019 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we celebrate Martin Luther King legacy. He certainly was a great man, an advocate for equality for everybody. Unfortunately, his life was taken from him because of his beliefs and his legacy of wanting equality for everyone. So we certainly want to remember him on this day. We have come a long way as a country in the last fifty years. However, we're not to where we probably should be, so we still have some work to do. And we certainly want to offer condolences to his family and remember him for everything that he offered this country while he was with us and that he rests in peace. Also, the city of Crest Hill over the weekend lost one of its very prominent citizens, Catherine Thomas. One hundred and three years young, she passed away Friday late afternoon. Kay was a pioneer when it came to volunteerism, to leadership. She lived in this city for a very long time. She was one of the leaders of this city back in 1959 when the city of Crest Hill wanted to incorporate and their legal battles with the city of Joliet. She led the charge for the city to become a city in which we became incorporated on January 22nd, 1960. She also was a pioneer. She was a charter member and involved in the formation of the Crest Hill Women's Civically, which is still an active organization in the city of Crest Hill today. She was a member of the Ladis Memorial Committee. She helped out at the churches, at the schools. She was the charter member of the Crest Hill Veterans Committee back in 1986 when they started putting everything together for the memorial that we have outside City Hall today. She served as the treasurer for almost twenty years. So whenever there was a need for volunteerism, she was first to be recognized and first to help. So as a city, we want to thank her family for the years of service that Kay Thomas gave to the city of Crest Hill. We extend our condolences to her son Randall and to her daughter Susan, to her grandchildren and to her great-grandchildren. So I would ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of Martin Luther King and also for Ms. Catherine Thomas. Roll call, please, Jen.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Vicki Hackney. Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barb Sculler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Tom Inman.
Here.
Okay.
You have before you the minutes from the city council meeting held on January 17th, January 7th, 2019. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by all the women's clerks, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the minutes of the city council meeting held on January 7th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session held on Monday, January 14th, 2019. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cola di Pietro, seconded by Alderman Inman. Questions or comments in regards to the minutes of the work session held on January 14th, 2019? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Tom Inman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we will resume with the regular agenda and we will go to our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three agenda items for your consideration this evening. The first two are related. All three were discussed at the January 14th work session. The first two are in relation to our new Public Works building and this would be both an engineering as well as architectural services proposal to complete that Public Works design. The first is a resolution authorizing execution of a professional engineering services proposal with Spaceco Inc., and that is at the cost of $29,500 to finalize the civil engineering for the site.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional engineering services proposal with Spaceco Incorporated. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries and it's resolution number 1019.
Thank you. The second item is related also to the Public Works facility and that is a resolution authorizing execution of a professional engineering services proposal with United Architects and that is to finalize the architectural and get those stamped plans for the Public Works building.
So moved.
Sorry, that is at the cost of $37,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for a resolution authorizing execution of a professional architectural service proposal with United Architects. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1020.
Thank you. The final item I have for consideration this evening is an ordinance adopting a successor collective bargaining agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150, minus some general language cleanup that the city and the pub-- I apologize, the 150 union have agreed to is a 2017 through 2021 contract. That's a four-year agreement with a 2.25% cost of living increase spread over each of those four years, as well as some additional wage adjustments to the pay scale, trying to prioritize licenses for increased incentives for those laborers. I'd be seeking approval on that this evening.
I will say that I believe this is a fair proposal that has been compromised between Local 150 Union and the city of Crest Hill, so I am in full support of this. I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Inman, seconded by Alderman Skler. Questions or comments in regards to the ordinance adopting collective bargaining agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150? Questions or comments?
I'd just like to commend staff for negotiating such a great contract.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And Tom Inman.
Yes.
Motion carries and it'll be ordinance number 1796.
Thank you. That was the final item I had for consideration this evening. The report is on file and for the public's information, we will be holding a work session on January 28th. Current topics include the pre-treatment ordinance, the draft sign ordinance, as well as the flood plain ordinance with additional topics still being developed. I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Just one comment I would like to make in regards to the contract with the Local 150 Union. I certainly want to extend my thanks also to both sides, especially to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, our assistant city administrator, Megan Flara, and our financial director, Ashley Motica, who are involved from the city side. And I know that there were several individuals from the union side. You know, sometimes these are never easy. They're difficult. Probably took a little bit longer than anybody wanted it to, but we have to look at the end result. Like I said, I believe it's a fair contract. It's a fair compromise. It's a four-year contract which will take us through 2021. So I certainly want to say thanks to everybody that was involved for the hard work that you did and coming to an agreement with everybody. Any other questions, comments of city administrator? Okay, thanks, Heather. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works. Tom Maggots, good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just two small items for you this evening, one of larger importance than the other, which is just a recognition of effort. The first being seeking your approval for an engineering design contract with Christopher Burke Engineering for a modification to the planned reconstruction in Ward 1 originally Council had looked at, improving stormwater and water mains along Kelly Avenue. Staff in looking at the project determined that downstream stormwater issues would have prevented completion of this project to be successful until we took care of those issues downstream. So we're looking to modify the plan a bit to deal with Ludwig slightly west of Kelly to Rayner and then Rayner down to Cowling to address stormwater issues. That will delay the Kelly Avenue project by a year and communication is already prepared for those residents on Kelly to make them aware of that slight delay in that project. The engineering agreement is for not to exceed $85,726. That takes care of not only the Ludwig-Rayner portion, but also a section of Pasadena up to an area short of the construction zone for the new Public Works facility as that comes in. Bidding those two projects separately would have resulted in a cost higher by $7,000. Combining them saves us that amount of money. Looking for your approval, please.
I just have one question and I think it's probably inconsequential, but the blue lines that are striking through everything on these documents.
Just a printer.
Are different than the black lines that actually need to strike?
That is correct. The black lines are part of our negotiated terms and conditions with Christopher Burke. The blue lines are just a printing issue.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the Rayner Avenue-Pasadena Avenue Design Services? Roll call, please.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Secondly, I hope Council would join me in congratulating and recognizing the efforts of Public Works staff over this past weekend for the snow event. Directors Coke and Seaford were instrumentally developing a plan that took into account all the various elements that the storm may take. We were prepared for an event that started closer to 7:00 PM on Friday evening. The snow didn't really materialize until around 3:00 AM, so they were instrumental in keeping the plan moving forward and keeping aware of situations as they developed. And then also, obviously, our drivers for the extra effort that they put in through some very cold and windy conditions, addressing the needs of the city and dealing with some other conditions as they came up. I think the event concluded right around 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning with some blowing and drifting concerns still being addressed as the day went on. Crews were back out at it again this morning to clean up curb lines and also round off corners that had been compromised from that blowing and drifting snow. So to the drivers and to the supervisory staff, I would like to extend my gratitude and thanks for their efforts this past weekend.
Yeah, and I would too. I got several compliments Sunday over the weekend after the event. I think that the gentlemen did a fantastic job out there with all the streets throughout the city. You know, the wind is something that we have to deal with. It was coming out of the north, so a lot of the east-west streets had some blow over, especially on Caton Farm and Runwick and Division Street, which is natural with all the open area and by near some of those fields. But you know, all of those are challenging. We got a little bit less than they anticipated, but hats off to every one of them because that is a tough job, especially when you're out there in the middle of the night and the wind blowing and the snow coming down. But the streets looked fantastic as they always do in Crest Hill, so congratulations to all the drivers and the personnel that helped out with that storm, police included. Secondly, just in regards to the Rayner Avenue, I want to ease any concerns that anybody on Kelly Avenue has. I mean, for the past ten years, we've done the engineering one year and the next year we've come back and done the roadwork. But the engineering at this time, as Tom said, showed that we needed to do Rayner and Pasadena first in order to alleviate a lot of the flooding issues that we still have in the area on Kelly Avenue. So we're trying to be feasible with the way we do things and to expand our monies wisely, and this is the best situation. So if there are any concerns, we're just delaying the Kelly Avenue project for one year. It is still on the docket for 2020 for the four blocks, 16, 17, 18, and 1900 block and probably some of the east-west areas to finish off the product, project. And hopefully with the work that's going to be done this year, we'll help with a lot of the flooding issues that we have in certain areas, especially around Kelly and Ludwig. With that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments anybody has of Public Works.
I just want to thank the crew again, especially Greg. I mean, he was taking calls from me yesterday night and he had the crew out first thing in the morning, so thank him for me.
Very strong effort on his part.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Moving on, Community Development Department, Economic Development Director Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items this evening, but I do want to just make a couple of notes here. We're looking at a very, I think, successful 2019 coming up here with the addition of Fuller's to Larkin and Speedway to Weber Road. Also, I get every now and then some emails that come in about the Ricky Rockets at the corner of Division and Weber. Right now, that is kind of at a stalemate with what's going on, and I would say, I would dare say, actually, that the ball is in Ricky Rocket's court at this time. Also, there was a couple of emails that came in about the for-sale signs on Caton Farm around Weber's empty lots. Those lots were purchased and we're working with the developers to come up with a plan for what they want to do. We're talking to a couple of national brands right now, so we're looking, I think, at the next couple of years to be very good for Weber Road. And then in addition to that, we got, we're working on a plan for some empty lots on Plainfield Road and on Executive Drive behind the strip mall on Runwick. So keep your eyes and ears peeled for some new news that could be coming this spring. And that's all I have.
Very good. Questions of economic development? It's going to be an exciting couple of years coming up.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Moving on, our Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Chief.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. I will say over the weekend, in addition to our normal police duties, we issued 73 snow parking tickets while we're out there. I just urge the public to please, when you have two or more inches of snow on the ground, remove your vehicles from the streets. It just makes things so much easier for the plow drivers, and it's just a hazard. So move them off, let the roads get cleared off, and then put them back on the roadway. But we're going to continue to enforce the snow parking when we can, and we'll be out there. So with that, I have nothing else for the evening if anybody else has any questions.
It was a lively week, wasn't it?
It was. Busy.
And I know you wrote, or the Police Department wrote 73 parking citations Saturday and 58 parking citations the week before.
Yes.
So we certainly are not picking on anybody, though we are certainly asking for everyone's cooperation to move the vehicles off the street. I think with all the social media and the television stations, everybody knows when the snowstorms are coming and when it's going to be over two inches of snow. We're asking for your cooperation for the safety of our employees when they're out there plowing snow. And once the snow stops and we are curb to curb, you're more than welcome to put your vehicles back on the street. And at that time, you know that it should be much easier for you, also instead of having your car plowed in by all the snow that's around. So again, with the cold weather, I know that people sometimes don't have garages, but please try to make any type of arrangements that you can for a few hours to get those cars off the street and for the safety of our employees and our plow drivers. Any other questions, comments of the Police Chief?
I just want to thank you because I give you so much hard time since Thursday. I really apologize, but thank you again for taking my texts and calls and thank the whole Police Department for their hard work.
I will. It was cold just as the plow drivers were out there, so were the police officers that are out there when it's cold. It can be very dangerous on the roadways when those conditions are in effect, so they worked very hard in addition to doing the normal policing. So I'm very proud of them.
Right, because usually when it snows, there's more accidents and everything else also, so.
Correct.
Busier time for the Police Department also, so.
No small complaints.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mayor's report. Before you have an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Crest Hill regarding alcoholic beverages, two weeks ago, I informed you that Bada Brew did not renew their license, so I am asking for a motion to reduce the number of Class A liquor licenses, which is for taverns in the city of Crest Hill, from eight to seven.
So moved, Mayor.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments in regards to the motion amending the Code of Ordinances for the city of Crest Hill regarding alcoholic beverages? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries and it is ordinance number 1797.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the appointment of a Deputy Liquor Commissioner. You have before you the paperwork for Mr. David Stangley, Crest Hill resident. He has gone through the process. He was interviewed by myself. He was also at the work session here last Monday evening on January 14th. You have a copy of his application and you also have a copy of his resume in your packet. I am asking Council's concurrence to appoint Mr. David Stangley as Deputy Liquor Commissioner of the city of Crest Hill at a salary of $50 per month. Salary will be effective immediately.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Skler. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
And Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, David, and look forward to working with you. And also, you're going to be working with Mike Gale, who you will be being mentored by Mr. Gale. Unfortunately, with the passing of Vic Pavlich, who was the Liquor Commissioner in the city of Crest Hill for 45 years, there needed to be a replacement. So congratulations, Dave, and like I said, look forward to working with you for years to come as Deputy Liquor Commissioner. Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation for the Crest Hill Schools Choice Week. We have done this in the past, so I would ask that we begin with the reading of the proclamation with Alderman Dyke. Proclamation commemorating the city of Crest Hill School Choice Week, whereas all children in the city of Crest Hill should have access to the highest quality education possible and.
Whereas the city of Crest Hill recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the city of Crest Hill to be successful adults and.
Whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Crest Hill and.
Whereas the city of Crest Hill is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children's and.
Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community and.
Whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children and.
Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options.
Now therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the powers vested in me as the Mayor of the city of Crest Hill, along with the members of the city council, to hereby designate January 20th, 2019 through January 26th, 2019, as the city of Crest Hill School Choice Week in the city of Crest Hill, Illinois. In witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this 21st day of January 2019. Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Verche, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the proclamation? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
Claudia Oberlin.
Yes.
And Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
In regards to that, I believe that we should be very proud of the schools that we have in the city of Crest Hill. Chaney-Monji Grade School, Richland Grade School, we have Montessori School, we have a number of daycare centers throughout the city and also some of our residents go to Plainfield Township Schools, Lockport Township Schools, and Joliet Junior College, and some of the Joliet High Schools and Grade Schools also in a certain section of the town. So thanks to all the educators that help out, and again, the proclamation was just to make sure that we allow all of our residents to have the choice of whether they want public, private, or the Montessori type of school system for their children. Next on the agenda is a donation for the 2019 Old Timers Baseball Association banquet that they have every year in which they give money back to all of the organizations, including the city, the Crest Hill Boys Baseball. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cola di Pietro. Is that for $100, Marco?
For $100, yes.
Seconded by Alderman Gazal. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Barb Sculler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And last is the donation for Will County Senior Services. We had the representatives here two weeks ago in regards to their transportation system. I will tell you that I did get an email. They said that they have signed up three individuals from the City of Crest Hill that wish to be volunteer drivers. They also asked for a donation. Our normal donation that we have used there for years is $100 to each organization, so I would ask for a motion for a $100 donation to Will County Senior Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Skler, seconded by Alderman Albert for a $100 donation to Senior Services, which will come out of the Touch of Summer Fund. Roll call please.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Barb Skler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's all the agenda items, just two comments. We will have a new business in the City of Crest Hill, which will be located at 1841 Nap Drive. It'll be called Sophia's Bistro. It'll be operated by Mr. Sammy Bobby. He has several bistros throughout the state of Illinois, so he will be opening up very soon here at that location. It will be a gaming facility, which will have food and alcohol available. This is Mayor's Choice. Mr. Bobby did go through the process for the liquor application. Everything was in order, so he has the approval of the Mayor as a restaurant to open up that business as soon as all of his other obligations are met for that building, so I expect that to be open in the next couple of weeks. And last is, we had an open house. We had a ribbon cutting last Wednesday welcoming, well Senator Pat McGuire has always been in the City of Crest Hill for the last 10 years. He just moved from his old office on Weber Road to the north, about a mile and a half. He is now located at 16151 Weber Road, which is the Crest Lake Building, Suite 103, and he has teamed up with one of our state representatives, Representative of the City of Crest Hill, Representative John Connor. So we have a state senator and we have a state representative in the same office in the City of Crest Hill, which will be very beneficial to us. I would like to thank Alderwoman Gazal, Alderman Cola di Pietro, and Alderman Albert were at the ribbon cutting with us last Wednesday evening. There had to be well over 200 people that were in and out of the new offices on Weber Road during the open house. So again, I'd just like to welcome Senator McGuire and State Representative John Connor to the City of Crest Hill for a long, long time. With that, I will entertain any questions that anybody has of the Mayor. Moving on to the City Clerk's report, we have our Deputy City Clerk Jen Sardar here this evening. Good evening Jen.
Good evening. Only one agenda item. Remyton Lakes Homeowners Association is requesting to use the council chambers on Tuesday, February 26th and on Tuesday, May 21st for their association meetings. The time requested is from 6:30 until 9:00 PM.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Skler, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the request of Remyton Lakes HOA? Roll call please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barb Skler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Due to my position on the Board of Lepstein.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
And Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions of Deputy City Clerk? Thanks Jen.
You're welcome.
Moving on, City Treasurer's Department, our Treasurer Glenn Conklin. Good evening Glenn.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from December 24th, 2018 through January 6th, 2019 in the amount of $228,393 even for the same period. I ask your approval for a list of bills which totals $346,160 and 43 cents.
So moved. Present. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the list of bills? Roll call please.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barb Skler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all. Are there any questions?
Questions of City Treasurer?
Thank you and good night.
Thanks Glenn. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business, anyone? Committee layers on reports, anybody? City Council comments, positive City Council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anybody like to go first this evening?
I'll go.
We'll begin with Ward 4, Alderman Inman.
Thank you Mayor.